I'll open up this meeting of the major planning board. The date is July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, and the time is seven oh three P M. And this meeting is being held in hybrid. Meaning that members of the community, members of planning board, you'll participate here at town hall or through the Zoom meeting. Five is on the agenda issue for tonight. Because we have one member online, we're just going to take roll call for now. Jim, can you hear us and participate in tonight's meeting?
Uh, yes, I can just barely hear you. Yes, Chris.
I'm gonna move it a little closer, Jim. We'll see if it. Heck of a lot doing.
That's but that's better. Thank you.
Okay. And we have. Including Jim online, the remainder of the members are here, present. And an alternate for tonight. We'll turn to item. For the approval not required for three to five short have. The applicants are Elizabeth, Jerry and Jean Gay are here tonight. If you could just please introduce yourself for the record, and then I'm going to turn it to Bill for a quick preface. And then I'll allow it for them, and I'm going to mention. My name is Seth Donald. I'm a Bill supervisor, so for tonight, Chris, but you have a few plans made to prepare the plan for you. And as you mentioned, that's on behalf of Elizabeth and Jay, who are at the five short have. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you for joining us today. Bill, do you want to practice for the board?
Yes, this is a just a A N R where they're creating two lots that are. Going to be conforming in the S one zoning district. Really not a lot more than that, so write down by the book. If you look at your staff report on section two. It talks about the criteria that the. Board has to determine. To make sure it exists. And that's. The lots have to be on a an accepted way, which in this case it is vital access. Exists, we have. Already heard from the police department and the fire department, no problem with this. And that the frontage requirements meet. As you can see in table one, it does it meets that. So this is a consistent, and my recommendation would the board. Endorse the approval not required. We have Mr. Donahue and the applicants here. If there's any additional questions about this.
And do we have any comments on D P W fired?
No. No, there's all reviewing agencies had no comment.
Anything to present this name?
No, Mr. Andrew did a fantastic job summarizing the tabulation of areas and finding. As you mentioned, the lot was built on lots for the season minimum required frontage and S one district. And a lot themselves broadly, it's even in a required way. We'd expect the request for consider endorsements. Side note, it's a family exchange of land here that there is a long term plan and. Listen, live next to their mother, and they'd like to be able to have a little bit more room, and that's why they're proposing to change.
Any questions from the board? Jim, any questions from you?
Uh, none. Thank you.
Hearing none, I have no questions either. I'll make a motion. That the board determined that its subject plans not constitute subdivision and are entitled to A N R endorsement. Based on following criteria that the lots shown on the plan fronts are on one of three types of ways as specified in. Chapter forty one, section eighty one L. Lots depicted meet the minimum frontage requirements of the major zoning bylaws. And that the planning board has determined that vital access exists to such lots as required by chapter forty one, section eighty one M. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I have a second. Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, we're going to do roll call. So all in favor, first, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Let's five zero to approve the A N R.
Okay, board, is it okay? Be able to do except to have June come in. Sorry, use your stamps on the endorsement. Everybody, okay, I will have this ready for you. Figure Thursday, Thursday.
And I'll coordinate with you to get the copy.
Yes, yes. And then we just want to scan the copy. There'll be a copy for you to pick up. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks for coming in. Thank you very much. And thanks for the nice presentation.
Thank you.
Item five. Of the public steering or the continuation of a public steering for one fifteen Main Street. This is a special term of division. From the applicant in McDonald Development. And tonight, if you guys could please introduce yourself, then I'm going to ask Bill to give a full practice to the board, and then I'll turn it back over to you for presentation. James McDonald, McDonald Development.
Danny McDonald, McDonald Development.
Mike Scotland Design Corporation.
Okay, Bill, you want to practice?
Yes, we opened up this hearing on the June twenty seventh. And there's a there was a few changes that the board wanted. To refresh, this is an approved project from the planning board that there's a request to amend. The approved site plan and associated special permit. Since then, there are some changes that I'm going to ask the applicants to explain. I haven't had a chance to really go through them. And I'm also the one thing I was, I'm not exactly sure, and maybe. Jeff can tell us on on. The where we got with the conservation commission, because I'm not sure exactly where that is, but the applicants can tell us. So I'm I'm not having a chance to catch up with Julia. And um, that's, I think, about everything right now. There were some issues. I have like. Half dozen things that the board brought up last time, so. But um. As that, I just turn it over to.
Do we have any comments yet from any town entities fired? Please, D P W?
Yes, D P W issued comments. Pretty, you you guys saw those, right? The the D P W and.
That was on the design previous to this, though.
That's right. Some of the. Yeah, some of the would probably would apply anyway. There were still questions about numbering parking spaces. So, Mike, I called you, Jeff. I'm sorry. Could be worse.
Yeah, I can call office.
Yes, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay.
And I could turn it over to you guys on, we loaded every. Their new files. I haven't been through the new stuff, but it's on here. And if the board's okay, I'll. Turn it over to you guys.
Thanks. And just so for version control, Mike, what I'm seeing is I have progress prints from July twenty first that are in front of me. So if whatever showing, I'm just want to make it good, it seems so.
That's good. And there's. Architectural drawing, which came today. So I'm going to show you those.
I have those, and those are stamped for July twenty fourth. Correct.
And then, because I hadn't had a chance to compare the architecturals. From the twenty fourth to what I did on the twenty first, I added one door back to the drawing. That you see on the front, and I added some hatching to show the extent of the pavement. And I will put the. What we'll call, I'll call the approved plan. And then you'll see what the other. It will obviously change. And then we can walk through in that set.
You want me to open this for you? Would you like to do that?
Yeah, because that way, if you open everything, then I guess.
Okay.
I'll go between them.
All right, there's one.
So this would be the approved plan.
We can open them all. Okay.
This will be what I created today after I saw the architecturals. It's the same thing you're looking at. It just says.
I got two I'm open on. Yeah, I can only one of that. There's two.
Yeah.
Anyone these open to?
Uh, yeah, you can open that. And then the last one is the is the architectural. Well, that's the three that you were looking at by us. It's the same thing without the hatching. And then the last is the architectural. I can jump between them then.
Okay, there you go.
That's helpful.
Yeah, here, I'll leave it for you right here and.
Still your seat.
Of course.
There you go. Yeah. So. Well, this would be the what I'm going to turn the approved plan. Which had the. Enter the single entrance. Into the building and then one way circulation. Through the building. Back out the same entrance. With the C V S driveway being here. So the circulation was through and out. There was. The replacement of the few spaces that were lost here was here. The last line we showed you. That we filed, the full set was related to two was two entrances, one here. One into the building, no connection. Two separate or at least two distinct parking areas. As I understand it, McDonald's have had a bunch of conversations. Various folks and I've certainly heard last time that there were some questions about the two entrances and what that meant to the municipal parking. So we were asked to look at a single entrance. You can see if I jump back and forth. This is the plan that you have. Just I've added pavement hatching to make it a little easier to see what's changed. So whereas. Previously, we had an entrance here to a separate parking lot and an entrance here. What we've done is. We've created a driveway between. Those two. Parking into the garage and the parking to the surface. This is only, this is an eighteen foot wide drive. This is an eighteen foot wide drive. This is a twenty four foot wide opening, and this is a twenty four foot wide aisle. To the end of the parking. So what you're seeing out here, nothing's changed with the exception of this connection. What you're seeing in here is is different than what you saw previously, because the architect has redesigned the garage for. Specifically, he's taken out, he's relocated a set of stairs here, and he's relocated the the elevator in some of the rooms at the front, and he's actually pushed them closer to the front of the building. Bringing up some space. Within the building to add parking. There was. On the earlier plan that we looked at last time we were here. We had had the two spaces for ADA at this location. There was discussion about the minimal head headspace. We've now shown the van space outside with one space. Non van space inside. Meeting the two requirements, two spaces required, sorry. And we've reconfigured the exterior parking lot. We've essentially retained this parking space. So instead of nine spaces. Which were all on this side of the entrance. We're at ten spaces because this space has been retained. Same access to the dumpster hasn't moved, and that is obvious. You can see as I toggle back and forth, the big changes are the connection here. And then, of course, what's gone on in the building. Significantly more parking inside than the approved plan, less parking outside. It's not so obvious here, but we had shown originally that it's the thirty onsite, the nine out in the municipal lot, and I'm just talking about on this side. And that there were about two thousand square feet of green space or open space on this plan. Above the retaining wall, the proposed retaining wall being here. Within the property line, discounting what's already below the retaining wall against the river, just what was going to be changed by construction. With the updated plan, it's it's essentially the same two thousand square feet. The area that was here is basically moved against the building. We haven't really gained anything along the side of the building. We haven't really gained anything upfront. So really was, and we've more or less retained the open space that was here. From the original plan, which had a slightly smaller area here. So we have essentially the same amount of impervious on site. The change here is again, we've got an eighteen foot wide drive and an eighteen foot wide drive. We do show two lanes. You could physically fit two vehicles next to one another here. Certainly not at any rate of speed. We show a stop condition here. We have, of course, the stop condition here. There's a require retaining wall and pavement on this side. This is the property line. So what you're seeing is about six feet of driveway on the municipal lot. In order to create that width, there's not physically room between this corner of the building and this property line to get more than about nineteen feet of pavement. On the McDonald's land without. Encroaching into the town, maybe the wall or pavement. And putting the driveway against the building creates grading issues, which I will try to explain.
Mike, can you cover that last point one more time?
Sure. There's about nineteen, there's about nineteen feet from this corner to the town's property line. So in order to get anything greater than a nineteen foot wide driveway or pavement with. On the McDonald's property between this corner and this lot line. And. Achieve the. Lowest garage grade that Jimmy is looking for here. Being about seven or about seven feet lower than about eight feet lower than the parking lot. If we put the driveway here, we end up with excessively steep. Grade, which creates two problems. One, just the user friendliness of the driveway. Never mind the turning movement. And of course, you can't, you wouldn't be able to. Make if anyone needed to go into the garage from outside, they would never be able to make this turn. Not that this is a freebie, but there's room to try to make a turn here. And likewise, if someone came into the garage and needed to leave, they could make this turn. So putting a driveway here, we ruled out, and the the ask here is for the eighteen foot width. Here, the eighteen foot width here. And some land from the town. If I go to this set, you see that this is the same drawing. I just added the pavement. This is what. Three plans you got today. This is the grading scenario for this layout. So again, if we hadn't, we're trying to achieve an elevation of one fifty five here. The parking lot is is a little over one sixty three here. It's about an eight foot drop. We have about seventy feet ish. So obviously, we're looking at over ten percent. We can't go with a straight grade from top to bottom, because that creates too steep a cross slope, if you will. For these folks. So in other words, if we had ten to, well, if we had twelve percent, thirteen percent all the way down. These people would be on the thirteen percent side slope, would also create a crazy angle of approach and departure. Here for people turning this direction, turning this direction, or anyone ever trying to do that. So what we did was we pushed it away, and we tried to create a relatively flat condition through here. Where we're at. Not at a thirteen percent slope, we're at a five to seven percent cross slope, which is. Certainly, you know, greater than you would see typically, but it's. User friendly from the standpoint that it's it's not, you know, egregious, and it doesn't create that. Abrupt angle of approach and departure in this part of the driveway. And then we continue into the driveway. So we go relatively steep, we flatten out, and we drop in. It also creates a slightly flatter spot for the. For the access to the dumpster. We would, we're showing a guard rail here. Realistically, we would need to add a guard rail here, which we would add if we are going to proceed. The other thing we did was we had to reconfigure or relocate some of the trees along the promenade. So we still have the same number. Of trees. We have, we have the nine or the eight, rather. That we had originally, but we had to reconfigure them. In order to use this as the accessible parking and get an accessible route. And this is why I changed something today. There's actually a door here. Into the first floor. That was missing. It's it's shown here. So this door and this door have been. On the plan from day one. So this would allow you to get into the commercial space, and this would allow you to get into the residential space. But if I go back to the grading, we didn't have that door. I wasn't sure where it was going to be. If they were going to come in like this or or continue that way. But to make this the ADA area, we had, we had to create the route that comes out onto the promenade and then accesses to the building here and to the building here. And then to the commercial space, you could also come up to the street and enter through the front. Here. And then in inside the building, of course, the ADA spaces, the ADA space has been relocated here, and you're immediately adjacent. To the elevator, which is right here. And you can see some of that more clearly if I. Come to the. Architectural drawings, and of course, not oriented quite the same way. So this is the front of the building. Here's that internal accessible. ADA space with its aisle. And then here's the elevator. So internally, this is your. Your. Your accessible route. And then. On the second floor or the street grade, if you will. Here's your entrance at the street. Here's that door I mentioned I was missing. Here's that other door. These two doors have always been on the on the building. Design, and you have your ADA ramp up. To the elevator. And the living space on the first floor in this location. You and if you were going to go into the commercial space, you'd enter here. And if we continue through, these are the typical units. And if we get to the this, I know there was a lot of questions about how it would look elevation wise, and so we're looking from the street. And if I overstate or misstate anything, Jimmy's far more familiar. I've just seen these today, but that's the street grade. This is the rear of the building. So you're looking at that wing of the commercial space here, that door that would be allowing you to come up from the parking area. And enter that from the rear parking area. Here's your garage opening. This is the dumpster. You can see the height of the retaining wall that would be to the left as you're driving in. This would be from the C V S. Parking lot. And then this would be from the promenade, and there's that door that allows folks who are in the surface, surface parking lot here. To come up and into the building. And then that's. Probably not super useful, but. See, get myself back. So. The last sheet and the three sheets that I sent. Is. Meant to try to illustrate the various. Turning, and we want to make sure we weren't bottoming out either. Getting high centered at the top of a ridge or crashing a nose or a tail from up an approach or a departure angle. Coming into the garage, coming to the dumpster, or more particularly using this. Ramp, if you will. So you're seeing all five. It's a little tough to to show. The five vehicles. We showed a car that's this vehicle, which we modeled on basically a modern sedan, but with a. Longer tail. So this is a four, just shy of a five inch ground clearance vehicle, which is about the load like a Nissan Altima, maybe a Honda Accord. But we also included up. It carried that with the modeling. We're using the modern version of Model ten, and I don't remember. I don't remember the name. But we created that nose, and that nose, it elongated that. Sub five inch ground clearance all the way out to the nose. So it looks like an old Vogel station wagon or something like that, if you're my age. Versus what is more modern. And then we modeled an F one fifty, and this F one fifty is actually the two wheel drive version, which rides at about an eight inch ground clearance. That's probably some of the suspension components. You can see it has a pretty severe angle departure, but it has a pretty. Abrupt angle of approach. And the green lines. And I can give you full size sheets, or you can look at the PDFs, but the green lines represent the body and the the top of the body. And there's no. There are no conflicts, or you would see a giant symbol. And that's not to say we didn't create a few models that had them until we corrected them, but. What you see is coming down. This is actually coming into the garage. So you see the coming down in from the municipal lot up here. This is that relatively flat zone through here, and then you get steep again, and then you enter the garage, which we've continued at a nominal pitch at two percent. Until we flatten out, because without that adjustment, there is a point of conflict for this vehicle. So you see, and then what you see, these other four are the car and truck going in and then coming out. Of. The side lot. So this inner. Route is the, I'll call the station wagon, the pickup truck. And again, they don't get high centered. At this point, this little ridge line is required because, of course, we have the hundred year flood and trying to keep the elevation of the extra parking lot at one sixty one. Which is a foot or slightly greater than what what is within the asset bed. So we don't, obviously, we need this as a dam, if you will. So we were concerned about this, but this vehicle doesn't get high centered. This vehicle doesn't get high centered. Nor do they crash their noses at any end. And then that's, this is the leaving, this is driving out, and that's this outer route. To the town's lot. So it's coming up to the, coming up to the, you can see the first. Little high centering spot right here, and then this is that fairly flat spot. You can see the protect, the fairly long stretch. Likewise with the pickup. And then the last in the upper right is actually how we modeled the refuse truck. So we took a. Mac refuse truck. And that's this line. And as I mentioned before, we have confirmed that the vehicle can make the left turn, and it would have to back out, or conversely, it would back in and pull out. We're showing a head, a front motor. Or at least a front approach. And that comes down, and you can see that it sits. At the dumpster. This is hatched is the retaining wall that's here. So the driver's head is at. Essentially, the the height of the wall. So they could certainly see into the C V S lot. They could see their mirror out over this wall. Because there was a question about that at the last meeting. So. And I'll leave it at that. We have. We have about the same amount of impervious area. We haven't reached lunged everything, but we know we can get the water we need to get it. This will obviously be a bowl. There was going to be a bowl with the two. Driveway scenario where this was going to all drain to a to either a drain here or some drains along the way down. This would be its own independent area. We wouldn't change much out in the the surface lot. We would still have the low. We'd still have to catch basin in this vicinity. We'd still have, we would actually extend the trench drain the entire length of the parking. We're presently, it ends about here on the approved plan. Because the parking ends about there. So we would actually pick up a little additional runoff from the parking before it got onto the promenade. But we would need to have some interior drains. Then I say interior, some exterior drains, but inside this bowl. We always intended to have one here. We would try to pick some, some of the runoff up here and here, but that's, this would be, need to be pumped out. This is something that Jimmy does in his other buildings. And it would be pumped into the same, we would have to site, we've had a water quality unit here. We would cite it on the on their property, and it would connect into the infiltration system. Which is here. The redivi, the revised grading. Had a slight change to. Sort of the elevations here in order to make the ADA work. So we are a little. Slightly more fill in this corner than we had originally, and we have, we have a little more cut over here, but not substantially. And then we were able to extend. The from, this is from a flood storage perspective, which is conservation related, but we were able to pull the the one sixty farther back. And create additional volume in this area. So, you know, overall, essentially a wash. I think from an overall impervious, we've picked up a little bit of impervious here on the town's property, because this would have been grass previously. We've also. Picked up a little impervious here because effectively we've added a space compared to what the prior plan had. You know, to try to balance that, we can lock this space off and make this an island for a tree, in which case you'd still have the nine spaces here that were originally approved. This little, this space wouldn't be kind of out by itself, if you will. More easier to see here. And and this would maybe afford an opportunity to replace one of the trees that's coming out. This tree was always coming out, but this tree would need to come out. There shouldn't be an opportunity to put a tree here. Probably do some plantings here, and we would discuss that with the landscape architect. And again, we haven't done. The hard drainage numbers other than to know that we're have a slight increase right now in all likelihood because of this. We would originally thought we'd leave the sidewalk in. This is kind of a sidewalk in nowhere right now. There's no reason to have that in. And as I mentioned, we need to show this guard rail continuing. Along at least this stretch. For safety, because there is a drop. And then, of course, there's a wall which creates a greater drop. Just didn't add it at this point. But we we will add that. This is what I have. Hopefully, I touched on everything we talked about last time. I know you asked about the conservation, and I'm not sure we're saying with them other than the hearing was continued. And now you know, and Julia, and Julia's here, so she could probably tell you better than.
Thank you, Mike. That was very friendly. I I really appreciate the little detail you provided for the nice presentation. I, let's start with cons comm and update on that, and then the plan to how do we review drainage and sort of what means kind of going forward.
Yeah, yeah. So they were continued till September eighth because the end of plans on time. We also don't have our landscape plan either. So we're still. We also don't have our landscape plan either. Uh, so we're still waiting on those things. Um. You know, big reason why we, why we continued was it to ensure that you guys had this discussion. It really didn't make sense for um, conservation to. Start talking about things when, you know, you could potentially change where items are in this plan. So um. Conservation wants, wants you guys to, you know, feel comfortable with, with the plan before we go, then go back into ensuring um, pervy service and all of those things, which um. Since Mike is representing them on both sides, he was very aware of all of those items, moving this around to ensure that he's still meeting um. All the uh, requirements of, of the conservation permits. And so, yeah, so we're, we hope that uh, September eighth will be able to um, to have a final plan and, and get them their approval um, for this change.
Um, regarding um, the land that is town land, that will go before select board. So that's not an item we need to. No, what we'll do. That's really discussed, right?
Yeah, what we could do there would be condition. Um, and, and I'm sure that the.
I'm trying to leave things with one entity between the applicant and one entity instead of multiple. So I'm happy to.
Right.
I think, I think Conscom has a good handle on the stormwater. On concepts. So I'm very inclined for that conversation to happen there and very inclined to have the town land conversation have with the select board. That makes sense to me. Um, regarding impervious surfaces and impervious, you said the balance might be more impervious?
So onsite, it's, it's a wash. Um, and by onsite, I mean from the retaining wall that runs along the river to, to the property line.
Mean the property line, it's, the balance is de minimis or negligible.
I, we rounded both to two thousand, one was nineteen ninety seven, the other was nineteen ninety six. So I've found you a test.
And regarding that, do you see parking spot twelve?
So. This.
Yeah.
That's certain.
I just want to make sure that. Yeah, the, the parking spot twelve, yeah. Um, that area just to the north of that, just above it.
This is green space.
That's going to be green space.
This is a retaining wall and we returned it to the building. It may be able to return here. But so this, this would be green space. Let's, let me go to this is easier to see the difference. That's why I added the hatch. So that, the, this is the new pavement. This is. Not all new pavement out here. It's just this island, but I showed it that way on the original plan. So anything that's dark would be pavement. So here we have a little strip of, you know. Uh, plant strip, some shrubs or something. It's the two foot requirement that Mr. Uh, Cranchell pointed out to me in the zoning, which we found. Um, we have that, sorry, we have that on this end too because of the stripe dial. Um. So this would be green space, if you want to call it that, or I'll call it that, all the way down to here.
Do you mean impervious?
In, in, this would be impervious.
Or it should be curvated stage.
Right.
Um, and is this space that can be used for landscape design or is it the, or is retaining wall going to be too high for it to be?
No, this could be established to be flat. And there certainly could be landscape.
Expecting a, a landscape plan that details the each aspect of these areas.
So yeah, so this could certainly be landscaped. As we, as I mentioned, we had to shuffle some of the tree wells around. Because of, because we now have a walkway out here in order to make the ADA work.
Were the tree wells more symmetrical?
This is what they looked like previously.
Okay.
There was one here, which is in our path. So we relocated it. Um. If I can, yeah, we put it here. There's certainly an opportunity to put something here. Um, which we did not show. That was also true previously. Um. What really, the, the, as I mentioned, the changes, this is really where your green space was previously. And, and now it's here primarily. So against the building, so. You know, um.
You mentioned um. On the north side, uh, where the, so the public parking spaces are. You said, you said just in south of that, there's a walkway currently.
This is, this is a walkway. It's not quite shown.
Probably two minutes of this.
Yeah, this is, it's from here to here, this pavement and there's parking meters and everything that work. Um, there's no need for that. In my opinion.
Generally, I'm okay confiscating that space for green space. It's part of the project. Obviously it's still in town land.
That's right. So.
You know, and. It's EBW's gonna have to review it, but I, I think that adding that as greenscape would, would be an improvement.
As I mentioned realistically, some of it would have to be dedicated to a rail or so, or some kind of rock or something. You know, older something to prevent somebody going, going forward. There'll be a curve, but there ought to be something.
So Chris, is the landscape in that area being covered by the overall landscape plan or is it a separate?
That's one thing I would, I would prefer to see the whole plan, the landscape plan. There's two. And Bill, unless you, I mean, they can provide a landscape plan that includes plenty of like property, right?
Just that we wanted to call it out.
Yeah.
The difference between the, the items that they're going to be when they're getting on their property and the items that the town owns. Is that, you know, all of those plants need to be approved by Justin, whereas all that stuff inside the property isn't really in his jurisdiction. It's more in my area.
Unless we make it into his jurisdiction as part of the condition.
Yeah. So for the reason I'm bringing this up, for example, is all of the trees that are on the promenade. Those trees are hybrid native species. There's been a lot of pushback. Um, those are the trees that Justin has decided. Um, the. The development is eager to put hybrid or, or native species all on their property and have no problem doing that. Um, but you know, that's the, those items where they're on town property has to be a discussion with, with our three board in maintenance.
So that would be something, the, the way to handle the condition along the tree board.
Yep, yeah, right.
Okay, on the one, it may, may need to be complicated or not.
We're talking about green space. The select board is in charge of parking spaces and what we lose and what we gain. Um, personally. Having read the very dry parking study done in two thousand seventeen, which is clearly not totally relevant, but still relevant. I feel like that one single singular parking space that's maintained now on the north side of the property at the top corner. Uh, yeah, um, I, I do feel like if it is the pleasure of the select board, I don't feel like maintaining that one spot is necessarily a priority.
I agree. I think it's.
If it could be, as he mentioned, maybe a tree plant, a tree, tree base or otherwise in per- uh, pervious.
I, I, I think that again, that could be something we could condition, but that would ultimately. Right. I think they would respect it towards.
Yeah.
You know, research into this and the analysis and they'd be, we, we could not.
Well, I'd like to point out that I totally disagree. A, that's a super cool space. You know, you want to grab every day, but. If you were here for Barbie night the other day, every damn space in town was used.
Wow.
And it could have been. And you know, it's a busy area. So. I'm not, I'm not sure I would, I'm not sure I'd throw away a valuable space like that because you know, that one space could support. A apartment building, apartment unit in above subway or something. It's very valuable.
I just find that, I mean, a singular parking space. I wouldn't, I don't know. You're right. It is a butt, but.
Excuse me, there's a tree there now. It's a tree where you've been left with it on that island.
Yeah.
So, that's, and. Looks fine.
Yeah, I'm sure that would be anything.
Yeah, just keep that same tree.
So if you go back to the original design compared to this one, are we? Or, or what's the balance of spaces that we're talking about adding or subtracting?
So there would be a same thirty onsite. There's just pickup of one in the parking in this area. It's essentially, we were able to save this space by tightening this up. And, and we actually, it's, yeah, that's, that's really what happened. And we also tightened this island up.
So the, 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 the approved plan from twenty twenty or whatever it was. Did not include that space, but as part of this modification, the proposal was to bring that space back.
I was asked to try to save these two spaces by McDonald's, but we cannot realistically do that without. Kicking the driveway so far over that the alignment didn't work for the dumpster and it created some other issues. The driveway needs to be as far to the. East as possible to create the longest run in order to go down as far as that makes sense. So.
We might not move further, make that far.
Well, then we hit this pole, which Jimmy's not interested in trying to move a pole. If he can avoid it. Now realistically, it's going to need support during construction, but I was asked not to hit that pole, which originally was coming out from.
A power pole.
That's correct. The approved plan, it was pretty much on the edge.
Ever so full on town.
Yeah, which will take a long time to.
Yeah.
Feel what? And there is the tree.
That's the tree. Which tried to say the two uh, parking spots, but I personally thought there were, weren't a lot, but. Going back and forth and back and forth, this is the best layout we could get and say one stop. And now to answer your question, would the, what was approved? There was, I don't remember because it went back many times. I'm sure Jackie can tell you. But so many parking spots on the town land was approved. Now we have still many. So now we have one bar. So we had approved for nine. Today we have, we're. Presenting the attempts.
Yeah, and I think existing is, yeah, so we're just maintaining today.
Yeah, it's just, it's a trade off.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy moving in either direction, whether that gets landscaped or parking. Maybe that's just a night with the floodboard and, or two.
Probably, maybe um, we can make it possible enough for the.
It is part of their jurisdiction.
That's the goal point, that's the knowledge point. Yeah.
Well, it, it's actually not part, but it, it's part of ours because the DOB special permit. Requires consideration of the impact on the downtown parking system.
You're right. And, and so.
We do have to recognize it. Again, I think the proposal is consistent with the DOG.
Yeah, because we're. That, that, even if we take that parking spot, make it landscaping. It's not, it's not a change from the approved condition, which is our approved.
Right.
You have a point, but from my experience with parking that some members um, don't want a parking spot a lot more than.
Oh, I'm going to say, I wasn't, I was just saying, yeah, Barbie was very busy most of the time.
Why didn't you tell me? I missed that.
That was so, don't worry. Um, uh, I, I'm not dead, I'm not dead set that I should be. I, my point was just that also one of the things that the town is trying to. Create is more pervious surfaces and more green space and more trees. That's all I was saying. That's also a priority for the town. So, yes.
I, I would, I'm happy doing this, leaving it as shown and then conditioning and saying. That parking spot can also be used for town landscaping. If select board chooses to do so. That way they can choose either one, but the plan show parking spot.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my concern with the town footprint landscaping is that the section. I'm a, you know, the role of nine spaces or whatever. I'm a little concerned that, that we're going to end up with. Justin landscaping and not robust landscaping. So I don't encourage something better than we have now.
We can propose something and then just have it approved.
It can be part of the landscaping plan.
Yes, that, that's, that's what I had um. Suggested before is, is that it's all one landscape plan. What gets put on that property though, does need to get, you know, approved by Justin. Um, and you know, for me, it's perfect. But in this case where that one is blurry, you know, I, I think that hopefully we'll put in stuff that doesn't really need to be maintained too much on either side. Um, so that we know when it, you know, highly impacted. I think it does need to be a collaborative effort for sure.
Would um, would you to be amenable to maintaining that landscaping over time?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, it makes sense that if the applicant. Yeah. So it makes sense if the applicant is, he has a landscape plan that we agree with, and the applicant agrees with, and they want to do the maintenance on it, then. Then all the things aligned.
We'll get together with the architect and come up with something and then hopefully Justin likes it.
With everyone. Yeah, I think, I think if you are willing to take ownership of maintaining it, to bring it into the whole picture. I think, I think likely he'll be pleased with that idea.
So we should see a landscape plan in the future or should we?
By next week.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, so we've talked pervious surface, sorry, I'm an apologist there.
Are we confirming Conscom landscape plan? I know we require it as part of the process, but. Are we gonna do anything further with that? Or are we just at this point saying, so we see a landscape plan and Conscom's fine and then. It checks the buttons.
So the way we discussed it last time, it was that I, I left it with town staff to work with applicant on the landscape plan. But also included Conscom perspective as well. And then that would be brought to us for the review.
It's often required.
I don't let me do that. Okay. Yeah, we gotta review it. It's required by our regulations treaty with those.
So i- if we get that, if we get that next week, you know, and then where would it be with? Like the one that comes, that comes next week, landscape plan, you guys are going to look at it and that would be.
In Sept- on September.
September, so.
We'll look at first.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we, 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 if we can get them.
The goal would be to have it approved years and then Conscom review.
Yeah, that's, that is in, in our discussion and brief discussion tonight. The, the one like hopefully by the time they get back in front of us, everything else would kind of been figured out and stuff that.
I would, Mike, I would hope that that, and I'm sure you're doing this one, that goal would be that, that landscape plan already has Conscom perspective kind of rolling in.
Yeah, yeah, they can fetch it. In here.
Yeah, great. Um, so I'm going to pause there because we've been discussing um, pervious surfaces, landscaping and parking. Um, Jim Coleman, do you have any comments thus far? Um, Jim, if you have any comments, just speak up or raise your hand.
I didn't hear Chris. No, I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Um, any other, so any other comments from the board on those sort of topics, landscaping, pervious? Even parking?
I got one, I guess it's related to parking. Um. You put up. Maybe alternative layouts and.
Yeah, hopefully. Cause I definitely messed something up here.
Want to focus on located.
Yeah, and I.
Are you, can we confirm that we're still sharing?
I know we're not, so. How am I gonna?
There you go, share it.
And then reduce that.
Not the thing though.
I have too late for.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
I work with two, I work with two monitors, so I don't have to deal with this archaic system. They're cheap. You guys could get another. McDonald's is probably buying. Okay, so.
The area where that.
Oh, down here. Yeah, this is, yep. Yes. But you're going to maintain landscaping. This is cheap. Uh, let me do this. That's actually a question. I'm going to, I'll bring it up. There we go.
There you go, yeah. So a comment is. Maybe it's not. We have accessible with an advanced space, that's why.
Yeah.
I was thinking that it probably ought to be a curved ramp at that little.
Here, so we looked at.
Right there, at those, at those smaller hatch area, right next to the doors.
So if you look at the grading scheme. That's really steep and. You know, so we had originally. Where's my grading? I know it's not super obvious here, but this is, this area is, is gonna, we're, somewhere we're going to have a cross slope greater than two percent or a longitude.
Right, but I'm not talking about grading for the ADA. Perfect route, you know.
Put something else.
If people are going to pop that curb.
Absolutely.
That's actually the.
Shortest route to the door.
That's the shortest route to the dumpster from your commercial space too.
That's true. And so having a ramp that someone could wheel something out there.
But yeah.
Okay, so.
It's not a perfect.
No, but I get it. So I'm, my cautionary note, our ramps is because I've worked at the town west for for twenty years, the building commissioner would check every ramp and then check every route. And he equated a ramp with a route, right or wrong.
And he acquainted a ramp with a route, right or wrong, we did not show ramps. Um, conven- we call them convenience ramps, if you will, um, but absolutely, if you're talking about right in this area, we could certainly create, now it's gonna eat up. Some open space. Well, if we. So here, this is gonna, we, it would end up probably being a step. Um, but we could look at playing around with this grade and bring it back and try to make it a little smoother.
Can you use the pervious? Pavers? In that area?
We could, we can look at config reconfiguring until there's, I'll call it a convenience, not an ADA ramp.
But if you take, if you need to take away any of that, that would take the still pervious pavers, that would be.
Yeah, all my numbers tonight exclude the area of the.
Yeah.
Of the payers, we didn't, it it changed phenomenally, so. All right, I I understand what you're asking. Okay.
Any other comments on pervious? Landscape planning, parking?
Yeah. Okay, so. I am very familiar with your other buildings in town in terms of this slope of going into the garage, and this seems to be less deep, correct? Though, I'm imagining the trash truck, which I know, if you can do it, then you can do it, but. If he backs in, I do feel like that, I mean, this is a much gentler. Well, slope, thank you. Um, and presumably he'll be backing in.
They're actually front.
Are they?
They're front already, yeah. Yeah, yeah, all of it's essentially backup.
So back.
Runways.
But it is. Like he said, like um. That the uh the the sight lines of the retaining wall, he'll be able to, it'll be above that, so.
To be on the seat.
So it's gonna be like any other thing backing out, it's not like there, he's backing out from all the way at the bottom.
Yes.
In a cavernous, but I think, okay. Well, thank you, I, the the diagrams really helped.
These trucks have mirrors. I was gonna say, mirrors higher than that. Wall, but these trucks have cameras on today also.
Oh, great.
So.
I've always wondered, have the one next door to me, did, he does like this magnificent dance when he goes to trash.
Yes, that's. That's the hardest one we have.
I know.
And he gets it, that's it, he's.
That's what we do.
I know.
They do it.
I know.
Um, when we switched to another company, I was telling the guy, hey, you can't, you gotta go see everyone, he said, hey buddy. We do Boston.
Yeah.
So I said, okay.
Um, and that, Jeff, any other?
Yeah, I guess um with all the turning movements that I've done, I I guess I'm a little concerned with eighteen foot wide sort of access into the. The surface lot. Um, I mean, coming straight down into the garage, I guess is less concerning because you're not moving, but you know, eighteen feet is two parking spaces wide. Which if you can imagine trying to take a right turn with another car at that stop sign. Seems like it would be tight, I guess it would be good just to see that that works, especially on a slope.
So vehicle envelope wise, you're not realistically gonna have two cars at that corner. Um, one's gonna have to wait for the other, so this person's either gonna have to wait for this person to clear. Or this person's gonna have to wait here for this person to clear, at least to this area. I mean, because of the turn, you're right, that knows the vehicle's gonna overextend.
Essentially one way.
It's it's for that narrow width, if we try to put the the turning templates on it, they'll collide.
It probably would be that way with just what the regulations call for twenty. Thank you, and and so we're talking two feet. What's what's general guidance for this type of parking lot, or these types of width, would it be?
Well, twenty four is the standard two foot, certainly within the parking. Um. You know. We look at, I. I looked at all their buildings, they have this arrangement in every building, so I'm not gonna tell you this meets any kind of standard, but I'm telling you is that. It works at McDonald's buildings, and I wouldn't have put it on a plan, and Jimmy will tell you, we've done a lot of this in the last few months, which is why we're. Not done yet, if you will, um, but um. Yeah, it it, so we did look at, you know, if we went another six feet. As I mentioned that. But you do something you can appreciate. Hopefully what I was trying to describe, um. I could operate this thing. Um, in this area, the the cross slope here becomes so severe that I became uncomfortable saying we would have people sitting there, so we we narrowed it down to six, this eighteen. Because I felt that was at least enough that two vehicles that stopped could at least get by one another. Um, yes, we put the stop bar at this location. Um. You know, up here. Now I'm in La La Land with this thing, um. Yeah, so we put the stop bar there graphically, people should be looking to the left, and if they had to, one of those is gonna have to wait realistically. I looked at, I've been in Jimmy's buildings now ten times, looking at ramps with him, and I've yet to see two cars approach at the same time.
Yes, that, and and almost never, and if a car comes even close, they put the brakes on. It's like a car, I would guess every forty five minutes, it's not like you think, like at a shopping mall or something.
In my mind, it's not so much one way, that it's one at a time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did, and we did, you, this is generous enough to get an ambulance or something to the side, and they're like, you're not gonna get a fire truck around there, you're not gonna get a refuse truck around there. Um, you can get a pickup truck around there, but you're not gonna get a pick, any of those are gonna need more space than the stop bar.
You can get our ambulances around there.
We'll get a regular.
I have, uh, you could actually thirty in there, but I can run something. If you have it.
Uh, but I believe emergency services before were not entering the back parking lot as the previous position.
They know.
Their two accurate entrances are at the front of the building or here to.
Yeah, but I just, I don't, I wanna, you know, when we talk on emergency services, I want to stick very strictly to what they have said, and if there's any changes to that, so. There hasn't been. They they were not preparing to enter the back parking lot anyway, so I don't think it's part of our decision.
And I don't know what's, I'm just.
Yes.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Prior conversation.
And as far as the reduced width goes, I mean, who is it, I don't know, I care, but. A relatively small, but turnover residential, and that's not a. Inducive pedestrian route. So. Yeah, I could live with it.
Can you, can you shoot it to nineteen? At all? I I do a lot of work with sort of T and P sometimes, and the team just feels. It does.
Sure, I mean, it's a, it's a tunnel on or an alleyway, yeah, I mean, we could steal half a foot in each direction.
Um, it does help.
I mean, if if they end up. You know, all of a sudden they're seeing the traffic that, you know, this warrants. A a larger space, I feel like you guys would want to come back as well and be like, hey, you know. We we actually do want to take this this surface and and go through this process, because if you're getting that traffic, then you're you're needing to expand in probably other ways as well.
Well, if that's the case, could you put the. You know, the wall looks like it's right on this, you know, planned south. Drive lane, if you put that wall closer to the building and add. Green space, you know, down.
Yeah.
Then I guess that would make it easier to fix in the future.
I see what you're saying, so pull the wall over and leave that as.
So that way you can still make that turn, and then you don't have to worry about.
Pull this down, essentially put the wall back here and make this some kind of passable, or I got you. Now, again, that's when we start cutting into the wall.
And so I would take these comments as as, you know.
No, that makes sense.
Um, design variables, rather than, to me, they're not necessarily hard to pass. Unlike, you know, we're talking more like considerations for design, and you have a whole list of constraints, right? But I, you know, I think we're just saying, you have, you know, if there's some flexibility with the constraints, here's some ideas.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess I didn't realize this is how most of their buildings are, and if it worked with them, I'm not trying to. Hey, about the wheel here, just looking at it for the first time, it seems.
Yeah, and that nineteen foot comment, I'm not asking that as a strict, but again, you know, if you have a lot of constraints. Is one thing to consider.
I mean, yeah.
If you come back and say, no, eighteen's our number, that's fine.
Well, I'm I'm gonna say this, we didn't wanna go across town line, so I'm already six feet into the town, if I'm gonna go another foot or a half a foot or do something like that. At this point, if that, at least this group is not off putting or a deal killer, then I'm looking at.
With the last um plan we had before this board, we were taking the second driveway.
We were taking more land than we are here. And losing spaces, that's.
Taken a little slimmer, so.
That's true.
I mean, that's a, that's a valid point, so if you're going to select board and saying modification. Still has a a net negative on town land we're requesting, I think.
We can also go back and calculate what this 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 take was, because this was much bigger.
Exactly.
All the way to here, so.
So you wanna settle it and make it nineteen feet wide, and I would, I would look.
Yep, I'll look at it. I I don't think it's gonna make it appreciably worse, and by worse, I mean, this is the the condition that. Condition I've been worried about is this cross slope here and creating that really harsh angle. From the people that are. Would in this case be leaving and then having to turn into that. Um, and not to mention the side slope, but anyway, I'll I'll look at that.
Um, so a question on. For that stop bar that we were talking about.
Yeah, they could get pulled back or whatever. So that can find us. This one.
You you can.
No, good.
Yeah, okay, um, so that same stop bar, when a car stops that, when they look to the right, can they see over the retaining wall?
No.
Okay, so they're gonna have to sneak.
They'd have to creep.
And then look right.
This person would be able to see them.
Of course.
But they'd know, they would not be able to see. Over that wall.
And and that's. To the traffic in here is the general.
Well, in order to, in order to alleviate that, we'd have to cut this corner a little bit. Which, that's something else I can look at. Um, setting aside the impervious. There's that grade issue, but we can look at it.
We, if we have a not ideal sight line, I think we just have to, you know, it should be, it should be a wide eyes decision. And make, you know, like, make sure that it's still okay. Um, I'm sure, I'm thinking it probably is, but again, something.
I mean, I don't wanna, I'm hesitant to say we could put a stop line here, which would then give them the opportunity.
Yeah, that doesn't, that would no.
Because now you're going up. Doesn't make any sense, I mean, it is the up a little further, but, okay. No, I'm making a note.
Okay, I got. I guess the topic on signage, have you, have you thought about signage, Mike?
And we have not discussed signage, any sort of either.
Yeah.
Stop.
Yeah. Um, you know, generally the scientists will go on final plans, of course.
Yeah, we only signs were searched on so far at the street, which we carried over. But. Okay.
And both signs. Um, I don't know if we need, we need a stop sign at that bar, maybe it can help you. Short circuit that thought rate now. That same stop bar.
Yeah, here.
No, no, you've been talking.
Yeah, there.
Here, does I need a stop sign, because that obviously takes up space.
Yeah, there was gonna be.
It has high requirements.
Yeah, there would be no way to fit one without encroaching into the lane. It would be too high if we mounted it on the wall.
Um, I don't know how to deal with that.
Like over the wall? Yeah.
Um. All right, if I look at the grades, I'll tell you. Well, that's true, there won't be that issue. Um. So. If the.
Painted on the.
It's gonna be on the, it's gonna be on the order of three feet, three or four feet, but so it could be mounted up on the wall. Yeah.
I, this, I don't know if M U G C. Strictly, but, you know.
I mean, it's an internal private parking lot, it's really. We've shown them, you can make them, I mean, you can make them less than the full standard size, um, but I, oh.
You you get the idea.
I do.
Yeah. Um, the. The handicap van parking spot outside, I assume you're gonna need a sign there.
Yeah, we'll add those back, we we didn't show the signs here, but there would be one mounted here at the head end, and it would be on the rail.
On the rail, okay, that's.
Between the tree, between the rail and the the tree well, or on the way, on the rail.
And I I'll just note that the tree well is really close to where the sign would be, so.
Actually, that's.
So there's a guard rail there that was required, prevent, so it would be mounted to that.
Yep, but I'm saying, um. You know, you don't want the sign lost in the tree.
Understood.
Right, and well, the requirements for the sign have to be a certain height.
Yeah, so I think that's the point, if the tree is not huge, if planting, sign will be in the tree.
You just can, you consider that.
Yeah, there's a fence, there's a fence in between the tree and the. Um, I don't think I'm following.
Oh, what was the fence? But yeah, what is that, but thick, the.
Yeah, the full size.
Oh, sixty.
Yeah, so the guardrail's attached to the.
The bottom of the fence is the guardrail, and then on. Top of the guardrail is the fence.
I completely missed that, I always had the impression that this was like a knee high wall fence.
No, this is to provide.
Privacy.
From the promenade, so they're not staring at it.
And that's, that was the illegal condition?
Yeah.
The nice fence is exactly like the sun, so.
It's like real. Yeah, it's.
Okay, um.
So the tree will not be.
I understand what you're saying now, yeah. Yeah, I I was, I I was thinking, yeah, that's flying like this, you know.
So all those signs were shown on it, well, those signs would have been inside, but the other stop signs were shown on the prior plans, we just haven't put that level of detail on.
I was just trying to be fair to this.
Yep. I appreciate it. Those are the next time, the objective will be to take that plan set that we had. The Concom and have that full set of the details and all this additional information.
So again, we're gonna leave the drainage conversation with with town staff and conservation commission, uh, but we will need a. Plan of the final drainage plan for the documents, of course. Yeah, that was, that'll be included, we will need the landscaping plan, of course, as well. Um, for the for the final smell, whether that gets conditioned or not, is it, you know, we can talk more about. Those are the items that will be needed for the final smell. Um, so I I was trying to. Keep this conversation topically. Um, but now I'm happy to hold it up to any topic, um, that the board members may have or general.
Can we talk about the building? And this. Yes, the the big picture is like. New height is thirty four feet, old height was.
Yeah, forty five. I think it was.
Okay. And. The view from the yes. Before was. A thick beside along a row of parking, right, now it's it's the apartment windows, you think available? Okay. My my other question about the building is, are we substantially different than the aerial choice than before or not?
No, still still fresh. And they, they, so, and everything before, when you look at another current floor, you would see. Now you'll see somebody.
Um, and I noticed that the uh, you know, the typical wall section of buildings, all of those are the same, you know, look back. The architectural, you know, molding at the the line and all that.
I would say, yeah.
We don't have to worry about that.
No.
Yeah, cool.
And I did notice that in the um building design, thank you for coming, the, you know. Space in terms of the retail space and the transition with the ramp, that makes a lot more sense to me. And it's like if they. Ramp from up twenty eight inches. Over. Gotcha. Twenty eight, twenty eight feet. Um, which. It makes a great.
Thirty and thirty.
But that makes more sense in terms of the elevator locations and the access to everything, right?
Um, have the comments from the board? That what we want to do is update the works of labor to. Um, I, for example, we get on Sky.
Yeah, all right, it's my last name.
Mike.
My little name is John with Jeff and Spolson.
Yeah. Mister Scott. Um, yeah, we can. Sorry, I'm sorry, um, update, if we update waivers, like with the, you know, where there's gonna be reductions. Like, for example, when the end of two major items is.
Okay, I'll have to work with you.
Yeah, that'd be part of it, just part of the final decision, so the board, you know, is exactly, you know. Um, we we have the previous, um. You know, they, that's true, the previous was a lot of the. Any. Any other topics you would like to feedback on at this time?
Um, nothing I can think of.
And or is there anything else you'd like to bring up or discuss? And if some. And if something comes up, feel free to email me and Bill Lemser, I'll pass that on to the Applekin. Um, generally speaking, I, I feel this is really close and on our track, um, so just to cover it one more time. Um, landscape plans will be provided and, uh, I think. Um, to get that to a place where it's ready for review, my goal is to review that next meeting. Um, and then I'd like to continue this to next meeting, if we can, that's okay with you. And then, um, review it next meeting. Um, same thing with the, uh, storm, the storm drain and infiltration. But that's not gonna be reviewed for us technically, I would just like to see generally what that, is, is that gonna be?
Yeah, that, so the, the infiltration won't change, we just have to re-plon it, if you will, on, on that, what I'm calling the bowl.
Just, just a, just a note of what that will look like, then at least maybe we'll. Yeah, a little time to come deal with it, but I, you know, like, or for, for us to approve it, I just wanna see the kind of bones of it.
That it's there.
Understood, no, so as I mentioned, we'll try to get the whole plan set back with all the details, all that. I don't know when your next meeting is, but.
Well, next meeting is, uh, August. Eight, I think, okay. Uh, so two weeks. Oh, yeah, so I was saying. What do you think, Mike?
Oh, we certainly have a plan for your review.
Will you have that material in, in the week before?
Before the year, before this meeting? Maybe, that's a week. Um, the plan, maybe not the stormwater report.
And we. We can look towards the second week, the second meeting then.
Well, you set that date, and I fail, I'll air it from then and we'll move forward to the next week.
What would our priority be from the day? Landscape, what would we call it?
Um, I think landscape. That's not. We're gonna need the final. We could condition. Then, so that the final stormwater plan is provided and the John said, you may not really see much of their final.
Well, I can get, I can get you a plan as it's gonna look, it's just whether we move parts around. That, that, it's not a problem.
It's just an item that we should. Discuss the changes too, that is our obligation to change this.
I think my, my concern is to, you know, the jurisdiction of conservation first, so. You know, conservation asked and figured out the stormwater, um, we still want, want conversations happening.
Totally agree, and my, my thinking would be that we would condition and say, uh, you know, the, the stormwater plan is approved upon. Based on the discussion that we had. Yeah, at that.
So we would lay it out, and if we need to change something, as we do all the final counts, we would change it, you'd get that, and you'd get the final.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't want that to hold up, you know, if we're still trying to figure out this, you know, one terrain number trying to figure out.
Not, yeah, I'm not talking about wondering, I just, generally, it's a modification, we just have to talk about. Conceptually, what that modification is a little more.
Understood.
That's our obligation, is to understand the whole change. We try that today. Um, I mean, is that.
Uh, yeah, I can get a plan with that and it will be ninety-five percent.
Yeah, you already, we had already gone over.
Everything on the outside is gonna essentially be the same, it's really, and I keep saying outside, but in that.
Yeah.
That depressed area, that's gonna have to change, on the outside, the, the surface parking lot. The infiltration system is not changing. That's the only reason we kept the grades, the way we did.
So it's landscape, that's, uh, stormwater. And then we'll, and then we'll have the signage on and. Finally, that discussion, did I, did I miss anything? Uh, if you might has that.
Yeah. Yep, waivers, L A plan, signage plan, the final, all the final plans.
Do we need to go through all those again, or are we just going through ones that need to be modified?
You're only asking for ten.
So it's just the ones that, additional ones based on the modifications?
Yeah, yeah, let, we should, yeah.
The waivers, is that what we have? Yeah.
Just whatever is needed, um, I wanna be sure about that, because I wanna get a good decision. Like, yeah, like, that can't be. Can't be appealed.
I think the only concern is if it's ten parking spaces, but they're radically different than the previous ones, do we need to?
I'm sure Bill and Mike will set up a waiver conversation, right?
Yeah, because I'm not from all the waivers that were granted, so.
Yeah, it should be very, yeah, it should be. Um, I have two questions from the, our last meeting, and I, I have question marks next to them. And so before we, we go, um. It looks like we addressed pretty much what we talked about in the later. We discussed about a no through sign, that all had mentioned it. And I can't recall for the life of me what that was. North side. Entering in saying you cannot get to Main Street from here. Okay.
And was that related to the fact that we had the driveway here, or was it just in general, either way?
No, I mean, like, no freeway, you know.
Concerned by people trying.
Yeah, I mean, the. Traffic study done for this. Didn't have cars going through this C V S, so one of the conditions, I'm not sure it's live actually, was. You weren't supposed to exit this. Like, through C V S.
Oh, but I think, so that's one item.
I don't, I don't, I'm not even sure that made it to the one previous.
Yeah, we can look at that.
It was just had to be in our, in our contracts.
This was, this was a comment saying. You cannot cut through the parking lot to get to Parker Street, so I'm not, not a throughway sign.
If you enter the parking lot, you should know you can't leave.
Yes.
Out of Main Street.
That end, not a through, not a throughway.
Again, just a part of the consideration. No, we're at the top of.
You're concerned that people would think that you've got through to nature that you can't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they didn't tend to go that fast, right, it was your phone.
And one more, Bill.
I D, I D right away. So that put I D the right away, and that was, I'm thinking, where the, um. On Main Street, right? Say it one more time, identifying, um, very unique way. Yeah.
Was that? At the street?
Yeah.
Or was that related to the easement that's at town? I don't recall that, that I don't recall.
I thought it was on Main Street, but, okay.
They were, you know.
All right, I guess, well, I don't, I don't think it provoked work in the, in right away, on the management side of things.
No. And that will be part of the full set, because it chose the crosswalk and the ramp.
You know, maybe because we were talking about during construction, we'll have to pull the. The, um. Then, back on to the, to the sidewalk for some aspect of the construction, and then we'll have to change the. Crosswalk again, but.
All the good news is our meetings are recorded.
So, everything else I have, I, I have.
Um, would your preference be to continue to, on August eighth? Mike, congratulations.
Yeah, because I work for them.
Could answer that either way. Um, okay. Um, motion to continue the hearing to August eighth. All in favor by roll call, Jim?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And that? And I'm a yes, that's a continuing to the August eighth. Uh, my, my thanks, really, really much, but, yeah, very thoughtful presentation, thank you very much.
And thank you. Or Jeff.
Good night, bye, thanks, guys, Sam. The minutes is always exciting. No. Are you yelling at us on, under item two or item three?
Whatever, anyone?
All right, item two, election chair for the next fiscal year. We don't actually, I was gonna turn this over to the vice chair, but we're in question. So I will entertain. I will entertain, uh, proposals or motions for appointment.
I, I make an assumption that we appoint Chris as chair.
As chair, yeah. Does anyone?
How should I come back?
Thank you, Jim, um, does anyone have an interest in being chair? Okay. Um, okay, any others, so no other motions? Um, okay, all in favor for the motion, uh, by roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Annette?
Yes.
And I abstain. Uh, now vice chair, uh, we need an appointment for vice chair. Um, this is first, does anyone have interest in vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Jim.
Well, I'd like to take it, but thank you, guys, I think my health keeps me from doing it, but I would also, uh, in place of that. Like to nominate Natalie.
Also, Natalie.
Okay, um, all in favor of that vote? Um, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Natalie?
I'm staying.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes, oh, my god. Why? Yeah, you gotta show up for every meeting.
It's fine.
Okay.
It's fine. It went, you know, you, as a vice chair, if you're filling in. And. No, if you're filling in and chairing a meeting, you can designate someone else to chair the meeting.
Fantastic.
As of right now, as of right now, I could designate any of you to chair.
I love, I love to hear.
You can hit anyone with the gavel. He doesn't tell you about that.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, it's, it's the hidden, uh, chair secret.
Sure.
Oh, well.
Um, okay, uh, we did. Okay, all right, so, um, that's item two, um, item three, request for planning board wrapped to. Community preservation committee.
Oh.
I guess we can nominate Natalie.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to appoint Bill Crenshaw as the, uh. C P C rep from the planning board.
I was quick, um, I was hoping to talk about it.
Oh, sorry.
And what, what the smoking goals are.
Yes, of course.
What are the, what are the requirements here, Bill? And what do we need to do?
Well. The, uh. I will, first of all, I. I don't. I'm kind, are you okay to, to represent plenty more, like, organizational wise, right?
Well, I used to be the C P C rep from the housing authority, but I resigned that a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay, so that's what the difference was, oh, then, yeah, I always, yes.
So theoretically, I'm eligible, but. But it's certainly available to anybody who shows interest.
Yeah, sorry, with the, previously, when I was leaving, I had expressed, you know, a que- question from people, and nobody else really seemed interested, so I jumped on the. Bill thing, but if anyone else, I mean, T P C has been great, I really did enjoy my time. Serving a lot.
We, yeah, we, maybe, yeah, Julius used to live quite a bit, and we, we, we have things that, you know, we could be doing. Probably, as we start with the powder mill, you know, I have, I could see the open space and, and, and. Things like that being ready to go, so I, I think it would be, we could probably do a lot more. You know, with some of the stuff we have going.
Let's get, talk about the creatures.
I think it's a time commitment between like September and May, it's like, you really have to go to every meeting in the.
How many meetings a month?
Two.
Yeah, it's every other week, um, and you do have to attend a lot of meetings, however, there are, it is a large committee, so, you know, it's not like.
And it does not meet in person?
Yes, no.
It's, how large is it?
Well, it just, there's, there's, uh, yeah, nine, there's a couple at-large members, and then a whole bunch of representatives from different, there's someone from. Con, there's someone from.
Historic.
Historic, there's someone from housing, yeah.
Some word.
It's cool, you get a lot of money to throw around, people will get real mad about it, it's great.
That's great. Um, are, are you at all interested?
I am involved in coming.
I assume Jeff is still getting up to speed.
Yeah, with the little ones.
I'm happy to be useful, um, but, um, Bill, are you, are you, are you okay with committing to it for another year? Or is that too much to ask, or where, where, where are you at?
Oh, I'm fine. Fine, I got it.
No, he should definitely do it, but I think that everyone else should consider, I, I truly, yeah, I mean, it is, it's a good one to be on, it's not. Boring.
That is a great way to start. It is not boring.
It is not boring. It's interesting, there's a lot going on, you get, see the whole town, that's for sure. So, I will, you know, re. Whatever my, uh, my, uh, recommendation that Bill be our representative to say that everyone else should consider it for the next year, because it is fun.
Um, thanks, thanks, Bill, for kind of following.
Yeah, yeah, well, and technically, I, due to some semi-related discussions this past week. It would be an appointment for a three-year term.
Oh.
Okay, just because that's what the bylaws say.
We could always ask people reasons.
Right, absolutely, you don't have to, or I could just.
Okay, um, well, I will second Natalie's motion to appoint Bill Crenshaw to the community preservation committee as a P V rep. Um, and I will take a roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
Uh, Annette?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Natalie?
Yeah.
And Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Five zero for, uh, making Bill Lemser the, sorry, Bill Crenshaw the C P C rep.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, um, planning update, is this one Julius gonna yell at us?
We're about minutes.
Yeah, she, I'm worried you'll, oh, yeah, it's two minutes, you're right, sorry, it's two minutes.
I've been making a vote to approve the minutes of June thirteenth.
I'll second the motion. Does anyone need some time to review? Are these ones have, um, Bill Crenshaw's comments that you provided?
Yeah, I made those.
Okay, they're good comments. Hopefully Bob's last. Um, okay, without hearing any further comments, I'll take roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Yes, five zero to approve the meeting minutes from June thirteenth, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June twenty-seventh.
Second.
Thanks, Jim. I'll give everyone a second to review, any further questions?
You've got a Jeff's name on here, there might be one.
Hmm, I felt that's one name on.
No, please, maybe.
It's all set, oh. Hey, so I'm getting paid.
Well, and there are other, uh, the person who was representing before on the conversation, named Scott Morris. Mike Scott, Scott Morrison. And you're like, no, I mean, Scott, and I, not saying your full name, I mean, the other, that guy, yeah, you know. You can call Michael Scott.
I only figured that out like really far into believing.
Um, all in, sorry, a roll call, um, this is to approve the meeting minutes from June twenty-seventh, roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Natalie?
Yeah.
And that?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, five zero to approve meeting minutes. And I'm a yes, five zero to approve meeting minutes in June twenty seventh. That is all the business we have for tonight, and now, I turn it over to Julia. Wait, are you gonna slow down?
Maybe it was good news first.
Yeah, I've, I've, yeah, before this, sorry.
I wasn't actually gonna yell at you, I was just gonna ask you all, um, to please spread the word about our Kai rental station grant opening. You all have been invited to, I was very excited, um, and, uh, yeah, we, uh, we are. It's an experiment, I just wanna make sure everyone is aware, you know, there might be some, some bumps in the road ahead, but we are eager to get this going and, and get more people out on that set.
I used one in Connecticut a couple of weeks ago, and they're, they're great, there's the, I mean, not the same exact, you know, company, but the same concept, they're great.
Julia's, Julia's working hard on this, and I'm really proud that, that, like, it's still together, and she did all the lifting on it, and the, the cons comm was, was, you know, her, but. Really proud of that effort, and, and it's gonna be a cool, uh, competition for the town, and particularly an activating, another step towards the, not to let it go. Good job.
I'll be on radio box in tomorrow.
Really?
And that's the yearly off anyway.
I may already say.
Did you use the microphone?
I didn't. I used the phone.
Right. What time is the?
I don't know what time it is.
It's, um, no, it's afternoon, it's like after the, uh, hang on, it's a little, you can keep talking and then I'll tell you.
Actually, after Jim and Marjorie, you go to the R S one.
Yeah. I think it'll get put on the website, the town, but.
Okay, yeah.
If I make any sense.
The, the other thing that's going on is, um, just Capitol Group at, um, at, um, Nater Crossing, as, as you know, in the last couple of projects there, there's not, um, there is a. I don't even know what you call it, but like a dog, everything.
Dog daycare and.
Yeah, but the spa and, but also, uh, a, um, overnight hotel for dogs account, okay? Um, they came in there and met with us a couple of weeks ago, it's like, uh, it's, it's a pretty large place, right? I can't remember.
Dog Cody.
Dog Cody. Full service. So you can bring your hound in and do everything within there, keep him overnight, whatever. However. Um, I, we looked and we, we really tried to figure out there's a way they can get in and with a special permit under what we have, they cannot.
You know.
It's a cattle.
Yeah.
In the end, it's a cattle. Uh, you, you may remember, we did a vet a while ago down there, uh, where we said, you know, we had, we let them board overnight with some few conditions and stuff. So, what they're going to do, they really want this, this, um, pen. So what they're going to do is, uh, send a letter tomorrow to the select board requesting, um, it's gonna be to us requesting, uh, a sponsorship forward amendment allowing commercial panels by spectral permit in the N B O D. Uh, that would be a town meeting, um, that'd have to be a town meeting approval. Uh, I don't know how the, why I haven't had a chance to speak with any of you about that, I don't know how you feel about it, I think, that I, I, I think it's, it'd be great over there. Uh, Chris spoke to them briefly, I think, and there's, but Julie and I and Rick have been working with, so that, that kind. Um, I would.
Then I thought it's on like five or six weeks, right?
It, it's tight, but we, I checked and we can do it, but we, we, you know. I just think we will need to have a hearing. So if, if select board agrees, we can, I believe we can open up a hearing. For our first meeting in August. And that will allow, if, if we, if we do that and we agree and we approve it, I think that can make it for October town meeting. I don't know if, uh, I don't know if, if the second meeting can, if the second meeting in August, the timeline, you know.
So they're giving the, the wording of the.
It literally, Bill, yeah, literally, it, it would just be an addition. An addition to the, yeah, it's a good meeting, right? You know, in our, if you're, I don't have a further, but, but yeah, it literally would just be addition of, uh, overnight or of a current kind. The line under, that would literally be it, in the N B O D, it's not in the use table, it's in its own section in the, uh, in the zoning bylaws.
Can we talk about it now? No.
No, no, yeah.
Right.
We can't, um, this is just planer updates, I mean, this is general information on it.
No opinion, none, I have none.
Yeah, well, send if you do, if, if somebody has, suspend the committee, okay?
Talk about it now, there's, nothing has been presented, or there's nothing that we're hearing of. It's a discussion. The one is a total.
All, all we know is, it would be a thought, anyway. I, I don't think it's today. And what, you don't think what's included? I think, I, no, no, I don't think talking about it, I mean, any, in any, you know, with any, you know, their general terms. Um, yeah, I'm okay documenting the schedule around it.
Yeah, sure.
Um, but I am, I don't, I don't, I don't want any real opinions on this matter until it comes to a third hearing, um, unless, unless there's some reason. Some extraneous reason to not bring it. No, and remember, we, you can hold hearings after the warrant is done, or I mean, if we put it on the second, i- if you guys decide to do it. Um, we put it on the second meeting in October, I mean, uh, in August, it, it's literally duck suit in terms of the wording, it's just, you know, there's nothing there. If, and we have the hearing, um, people like it or they don't like it, we recommend it or we don't recommend it, so then.
Just, you know.
Would have been, would have been.
Keep in mind that, um, panels in a planning world are notoriously extremely difficult to change them around, so, um, just be ready for kind of that public pushback.
And they're also very noisy. Well, this is why we have a spec, you know, a special permit, we'd have to hear, you know, that, that's why I'm saying that.
We're not.
I just wanna.
We're not, this is not a hearing for a special permit, this is a hearing for a zoning bylaw change, where you would make it by special permit.
But you guys.
You did with the vet. Right, remember we did with the vet, so if you have a, a, a sick pooch overnight, we, we had, I can't remember what we did, we did put some, some guardrails above it.
Yeah.
And if it's a problem, you know, but we're just talking about in terms of the spirit of the N B O D, would that be an appropriate use? So if you have any thoughts on it that are deeper than, you know, that, that are not appropriate, just send them in, whatever you guys wanna do, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, that was something that was being fast tracked. Yeah, just because of the, um, the dam. What else you got?
Wasn't that enough? That was good. I, um, have my powder mill, um, we're meeting one tomorrow, um. Beijing Royal, we, we met with briefly on our last week.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. Very supportive of the overlay district, powder mill overlay district, um, they want to have as many, um, options as possible, so they admire the idea of powder mill overlay. Um, I explained as best I could about, um, N B T A communities. And, and how we would like to utilize that as our, you know, fail safe or, um, meeting our obligation there. But yeah, they, they said they, uh, just staying positioned, you know, their work, um, winter wang is actually coming over September, so. So it's an invention. So, um, last thing is, uh, we, you know, they, they're re, um, revamping of O M S is underway, so, you know, I'm not sure exactly how that's gonna change down. Um, I'm not. O M S, obviously municipal services, yeah, right, Megan's also been in place. So, uh, there's been an organizational change for Seth, I mean, is the H R coordinator, now there's also, um, has been appointed assistant town administrator. So, kind of dual role there. Down here, um, it, it looks like there, uh, is going to be another position that will be, uh, O M S, uh, direct. But there's no further details since the moment. So it would be kind of like Megan's role being divided up. And it kind of goes back the way it was before Megan, where, you know, we had a town interior with H R.
On where, what should we expect for the powder mill border coming up? I think it was summer, or it's, we're looking towards the fall reality.
I, I, I think that. Well, the, the goal is still fall town meeting for our overlay.
The springtime meeting for overlay.
I'm sorry, springtime, yeah, 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 springtime meeting for the overlay.
We have a, we have a meeting, uh, a staff meeting, uh, with M P C in person in August, um, where we helped to hammer down and, and get some order reaching. Um, and then be able to provide you with part of the schedule for that.
Right.
But I see that, that, um, right now, w- we're meeting at, in, um, Thursday, th- there are going ahead already some, some of their initial drafts, so we wanna have a joint planning board meeting again like we did before, so we can see what we can do together. Um, there, there was a discussion about going into subzones for the overlay district, which it looks like we may end up doing. I don't want it to be too complicated because I'm afraid of town meeting, you know, people are like. But we'll do the best we can do to keep that clear, but. It's essential we get this approved, uh, at, at the springtime meeting because of the, you're linking the, the eligibility for natural strands. So the last thing we wanna do is, you know, get this, this, uh, wanted and go and qualify for a master strand, now it's, some of them say, no, you know, you, you have to. Simply try your, 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 for them.
Yeah. Um, did anything else?
Oh, sure. So I meant to bring this up at the meeting, in October, during that, we have a development agreement, and we moved the light bulbs in the promenade. And we had very, very poor conversation, anything and everything with EverSource. We requested on December eight, December nineteen, uh, two thousand eighteen, to move these bulbs, and of course, they've gone nothing. So lately, we've been cutting trees, and we request them to cover, you know, the power lines, uh, we're supposed to cover the line, we cut the tree. We probably waited seven months for them to cover them, and we went through three different tree companies. The first tree company took a chance to cut them, and then moved to go back the second time. But last week I had trees cut, I spent an extra thirty-eight hundred dollars for a guy who ran the risk, but. If EverSource, then I won't do anything for anybody, so I was through the last five years. Uh, just trying everything, different electricians, three, four different electricians, looks to me like they don't do anything at all until you have a bill. Then they're not stacking paperwork, so right now. We are required to have these balls moved before we get an occupancy permit. But this is very scary to me, when we waited, this is going on, find another six years since this started for us, then. If we build a building, and then we have a problem with an occupancy permit, then we really have problems. So if there's any way to, I, I'm not sure. Because it's not a waiver.
It was a thing of the condition, that we, the holes would be removed before we got the occupancy permit.
Was it in the, it was in the development agreement or the decision?
I think it's in the development agreement, but I could be wrong, it's, it's in one, because I read it.
Um, so, so before we continue, um, so we, we continued the hearing, Bill?
Yeah.
And this is kind of subject matter that should be included in the hearing itself, is it okay to discuss?
Here's what we did.
And, cause generally I like to be helpful, and I understand the circumstances, so I get it, but, you know, this is, the, the record should be inside of the.
Understood, understood, but I, I think i- in essence, um, maybe, well, let me, let me ask a question first of all, have you contacted, um, with EverSource, by any chance, did you contact rep with Hogan?
Well, originally. Originally contacted Hogan, we wore the line of talking to Crystal, and she.
So actually, what happened was originally when we applied for this, and we submitted all the plans to them and showed them the line diagram of where the poles had to be moved to, and what they had to go underground, the whole bit. Um, we had Greg Johnson write a letter to EverSource, addressing how important it was that they work with us. And we had Representative Hogan involved in that.
And nothing.
And nothing happened. This was in two thousand eighteen.
Um.
Or two thousand.
Probably.
Why don't we do this, um? Let's take, cause I don't wanna go too far in this with the, with the hearing, oh, but let's do this, I, I'm not here on tomorrow, Julie will be here tomorrow. But I'll be in Thursday, but let's find out if it's a development agreement? Or in the, um, decision, which is, I mean, yeah, we could call, um, I will, I'm surprised we paid Hogan, that, that, um, cause usually she gets with them, she's like the only one who can communicate with us, so. Maybe we should check in, yeah, we could check in with her again, um.
Yeah, we can, believe me, we cannot go ahead with this building and have that hanging over our head, we just can't, because, um, this is six ye- going on six years since we started this project, and the money is just like spilling, we can't have a building built.
Yeah.
And this, and no occupancy permit, and treaty after all.
So let, let's.
She's depending on Hogan, we can't be, he says.
We're just, that what we're asking for is more flexibility around the terminology of it, holding back and off.
Well, here's how, here's how it would work, um, if it was in the decision. If it's a decision, when the, this decision is done, we can, that, that could be.
Then it could be amended.
Public guarantee.
Okay.
If it's in the memorandum of agreement or development agreement, it, uh, is a vote of both. Your vote boards, yeah, both boards, which I, 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 you know, I, I can't speak for the board, but I would imagine that they would understand.
Let's, let's do this, Bill's gonna do some research, work with him, and. We can develop, staff will develop options on how, yeah, how to proceed.
Yes.
Let's just talk about it at the next hearing, what those options are.
Yeah.
And, and offline, so we don't have any.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, I, I understand that completely, I think.
That's why we came back in tonight, just.
Yeah, 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 um. And that's the, 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 the one out front, the, the.
There's there, that one, and there's one in the promenade right in there.
Would you mind, Jack, sending a quick email?
Yeah.
Explaining it, you know, image, you know, figure, wishlight pole, you know, and stuff like that.
Well, what, what should you do is, send you a copy of what's in the decision, what decision, where, where is it at?
Thank you very much.
And send it to both of us, cause I'm out tomorrow, but, but Julia can look at it too, okay?
You were gonna get it.
I know, yeah, I'll figure it out. Thank you, I'll talk to you.
My left is stung, god, here, somebody's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My house, we, thank you. Are you? We went from a forty-five minute meeting.
Yeah.
Isn't it, I don't know. Did you make a right decision?
It means fifty, this is pretty good.
If we go past an hour and a half, an hour, we.
Good meeting.
Can we have a moment to close?
Um, real, real work takes time.
Hey, Jeff was on that board, so it's your, your, shoot that in.
Jim, save us, Jim, you wanna, you wanna close the meeting for us?
I would be very delighted to. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we close tonight's meeting.
Do I have a second?
I will definitely second that.
Alright, definitely, all, uh, this will be a vote by roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Sure.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Annette?
Yes.
I'm a yes, that's five zero to, to close the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, and Jim, thank you for participating tonight, hope to see you soon.
Thank you, buddy, thank you, good night. Bye, everybody.
That's insane.